Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Melrose School Committee. The date is October 26, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Jen McAndrew. I'm the Chair of the Committee. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by our friends at MMTV with our thanks. And Ms. Hogan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Obramsky?
Here.
Mayor Broder is late. Ms. Driscoll?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Rosy Thomas?
Here.
Ms. DeSelmis absent. Ms. McAndrew?
Here, and a quorum is present, and we are ready to proceed. Let us stand as we are able for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you all very much. First up tonight is the report of our student representatives, Ruby Robisho and Morgan Kirby. Hello to you both, and thank you for being with us tonight. Do you have any things to report to us from Melrose High School?
So, hello, and so right now, our volleyball team is 16-2. Our football team won on Friday, so everyone's pretty happy about that. There's a fundraiser on tomorrow at Biddy &amp; Bowes for the Gray Sync Scholarship. We want to tell people to attend that. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Oh, and our unified basketball team is undefeated right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Additionally, Sunday was the Melrose Alliance Against Violence Walk, where a lot of teams, athletics teams participated in that. Sunday was the senior Halloween dance, and we're currently deciding on a new mascot. And Vice Principal Corrigan dressed up as a Wookiee from Star Wars, suggesting that one as our mascot. Yes, we do. And then Monday was Picture Day. And coming up for November 1st and 15th are senior college early deadlines. And then the quarter closes on the 3rd.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee for the student representatives? Mayor Broder?
Quick chance to hype something, and that is, correct me if I'm wrong, the unified basketball team is having Senior Day, I think, Thursday at 3:30, and that is something that the public is welcome and encouraged to attend. It's really an amazing thing to go see.
Thank you, and I assume that's at the main gym? Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Broder. Thanks, you guys. Thank you both for being with us, as always. Good to see you. Next up is public comment. Now we move to the portion of our meeting where the public may comment for up to three minutes each on matters before the committee. During this time of transition, we are offering a remote public meeting comment option as well. No one signed up for the remote option tonight, but we do have, I believe, several folks who have signed up to comment here in person. Just a few reminders, if I could, that comments are limited to up to three minutes each. And let me also say before we begin that we have received several emails this week, and the committee has closely read and considered all of those views as well. We thank everyone who shares their comments with us, and we take them seriously. And so without objection, the public comment portion of the meeting is now open. First up is Scarlett Rajbonchi. Scarlett? And if I could just remind everyone, including committee members, to speak right into the mic, this helps the folks watching at home hear all of our comments. So if you can even pull it a little bit closer to you, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Go ahead. You're recognized for three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see people in person in a very long time. My name is Scarlett Rajbonchi. I am a parent at the Winthrop. I have a 4th grader there. I imagine the emails you alluded to had to do with Halloween. My comments are broader than just Halloween. I consider myself a fairly liberal person who values our multicultural democracy greatly, but I'm having a really hard time with how the district is approaching equity and inclusion. It started with the district's approach to COVID testing. Instead of mandating it, which would make the schools safer, the district decided to go to sign-up route, citing equity. Thus, we have less safe schools in the name of equity. And I'll be honest, I don't understand how a COVID testing mandate that would make the schools safer is not equitable. The letter the superintendent sent earlier this week did little to alleviate my concerns. I'm very concerned about how the district will review our past events and traditions. Not everyone celebrates Thanksgiving. Is the turkey trot at Winthrop going to be on the chopping block? Valentine's Day? No more cheap cards from CVS? I'm joking, but these traditions are what many children remember and are their favorite memories of school. It's almost as if it's a race to the bottom, where we're eliminating any color, any tradition, that perhaps not everyone engages in. I asked you, Dr. Kuchenberger, earlier this week. You didn't respond. That's fine. I know you're busy. You know, some people have a sincerely held belief that meat is murder. Eating meat is murder. That's a sincerely held belief. If someone approached you in our community and said, "You know, I'm not comfortable eating in the cafeteria because my fellow students are eating meat," would you ban the consumption of meat in order to make that person feel more comfortable? I don't know what the answer to that is, but it seems like that's the approach the district is taking. If there are adjustments we can make to our traditions and these events that we hold in order to make them more inclusive, I'm all in favor of that. But I just caution the district to be careful not to eliminate the color, the flavor, that, you know, makes these traditions that our children, you know, enjoy and make our community special. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next up is Tara Pope. Ms. Pope, you're recognized for three minutes.
Hi. Thank you all. I know there's been a lot of debate over the subject of Halloween this past week, and although we may all be sick of it, I just want to share my opinion on this, as I know there are many opinions out there. But as I got involved in this discussion, all I hoped for was the return of some normalcy for my son and all of our children at the Winthrop Elementary and all the elementaries across town. And though I understand that Halloween isn't celebrated by all children, I think for most children in this community, it is a day where they can have treats, maybe dressing silly costumes, maybe not, and just have fun. Over the past two years, there have been so many devastating things happening in this world, and because of this, I know some people think this argument might be silly. But for our kids, especially in elementary school, their lives have been turned upside down. And the question of why does everything have to be different, Mama, has come to me a lot. And since I haven't always been great at handling this isolation and changes myself that we've all felt over the past couple of years, it's a hard question to answer. Hence, again, why I went into this to get some normalcy back for my only child son, who has gone from feeling very alone in quarantine and all the emotions as we have all felt lately, and mostly just misses his friends and his traditions with them. Nothing about this argument for me is non-inclusive, as I've said many times, but I just wish we could all listen to each other and come to an agreement that lets everyone celebrate what they all enjoy together. There will always be things that some don't celebrate and others do, hence this culturally diverse community we have built. And there will always be someone who inadvertently gets left out or families that can't afford the same as others. But let's teach our children how to deal with these situations and make them feel good about what they can do to celebrate everything and how to always include others in that. I will leave it on this note. My son happens to be one of the few kids in his class, or in his group of friends at least, that doesn't like to play soccer. And this may seem silly, but in particular, he doesn't want to be part of it. He doesn't want to watch it, and a lot of days, he comes home upset, feeling left out because he says he has no friends at recess. Now, if we go with the idea that we can't exclude anyone from anything during the school day, then you would think I should be able to ask that soccer be removed from recess because my son feels left out. However, I would never do that. Instead, I explain to my son that everyone has a right to do and celebrate or believe what they want, but it wouldn't be fair to the hundreds of kids who do enjoy soccer to take that away from them. And I see it as an opportunity to teach him that things are not always going to be easy and not everything can be centered around him or one or a few. I tell him he can play soccer and try to enjoy the time with his friends, or he can choose something else and know that he might always have to play with other kids at recess that day. This is a life lesson. As we all have learned more than ever recently, life is not always fair. But if you are nice to people, teach them what you enjoy. Maybe you will all find something new to do together. Sometimes you will, sometimes you won't, but that is another strong lesson itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pope. That is everyone who has signed up this evening for public comment. And so without objection, public comment is now closed. Thank you all. Next up, we have announcements of the superintendent of schools. Dr. Kuchenberger.
Thank you, Chair McAndrew. I have a couple of announcements tonight, but I wanted to start first by recognizing our Assistant Superintendent of Pupil and Personnel Services, who is retiring in just a few days. Our colleague Donna Rosso and others are joining us tonight and inviting Patty forward so that we can acknowledge you one final time. I know you have to present tonight, but we wanted to start by just acknowledging your years of service. And although I've only been here in Melrose for about a year and three months, I have learned much from Patty and about Patty's strengths and the many contributions she has provided our students and our families. So Donna, if you would, the mic is yours to say a few words.
Thank you. Patty made me promise I would not cry, and I would not make her cry, so I will not do that. But there's much to recognize. In September, when Patty announced that she was retiring, she came over to see me at the Franklin with a bouquet of flowers for me. As is the case with all things Patty, she is always looking out for and considering the needs of others. I have had the absolute pleasure of working with Patty since September 2001. We started together in another district. I started after her in that other district. In that time, Patty has served alongside four superintendents. Other than Patty and the fact that they were all superintendents, the four could not have been more different. Yet Patty was a confidante and go-to person during the best of times and during the challenging times for each one of these four people. Before heading to Melrose in 2007, Patty served with then-superintendent of Georgetown Public Schools, Mr. Larry Boran. Patty often described how, in her work with Mr. Boran, she was able to begin to see for the first time the possibilities of what including all students could really mean for families, students, and for a community. Her efforts to start the first integrated preschool program designed to meet the needs of students with an autism spectrum diagnosis in Georgetown is what ultimately brought her to Melrose seven years later. Along with her groundbreaking work to include all students, Patty was an educational leader known for long hours and a total commitment. My very first memory with Patty was actually on 9/11, our very first day of school in Georgetown. My first day in this integrated preschool classroom. As Mr. Boran's confidante, Patty was the person who was chosen to walk from classroom to classroom to share the news of the devastating disaster which would have a profound personal impact on each person she met with that morning. Forever the rock, Patty was composed and knew just the right words to share to bring comfort and courage to all she spoke to. In 2007, then-superintendent Mr. Joseph Casey called upon Patty to come to Melrose and to again break ground on an inclusion project, beginning for the first time in Melrose. The program again was to be focused on developing programs of inclusion for students on the autism spectrum, which today is known as the TLC at the Roosevelt and Franklin. Mr. Casey, like Mr. Boran, also saw Patty as a confidante. Her responsibility was often to keep Mr. Casey focused and not stopping at too many bakeries to purchase snacks for every person he would meet. With this focused attention, Patty and Mr. Casey saw the vision for an early childhood center, now known as the Franklin. They saw that come to life. Together, Mr. Casey and Patty took Jenny Quorduck and me out for ice cream and then to tour the Franklin. Patty was very convincing as she shared a vision for turning what was at the time an old, worn-out building filled with leftover junk from the Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Middle School Building Project into what today is a shining example of all that Melrose Public Schools has to offer all students and families. In her time with Mr. Casey, Patty was a true visionary, bringing together supports to develop programming for students with cochlear implants and a newly redesigned postgraduate program. We moved from each elementary school following their own curriculum to, for the very first time, purchase and implement a consistent general education curriculum for English Language Arts and Math, along with common assessments across all schools. Mr. Casey's retirement, Patty welcomed Ms. Cindy Tamar. Mr. Casey and Ms. Tamar could not have been more different. Yet again, Patty became a close, dependable confidante to Ms. Tamar. Where Joe was about connecting with people in Nosh, Cindy had a great deal of critical work that needed to be accomplished at a record speed. We were already behind the eight ball with the implementation of the curriculum standards and the teacher evaluation. This was a time of significant change in education, and much work was to be done. I can remember hearing Cindy call from her office down the hall, "Patty!" Patty would quietly and confidently walk into the meeting, and suddenly, we were back on track, and we had a clear vision for the direction we needed to head. During the years of Cindy's leadership with nationwide accountability and significant educational change, Patty was often the calm in the storm for teachers, administrators, and community members. She developed strong relationships with Melrose Alliance Against Violence, our CPAC, and Melrose Educational Foundation. She sat on many hiring committees and saw the growth of educational services at the Franklin and across the elementary schools with our before and after-school program and our summer offering for middle schoolers, bringing community members into the conversation and the work of supporting our schools. Budget challenges and finally, the passing of a budget override is a legacy Cindy and now Patty and many others can be very proud of. With Cindy's retirement last year, Patty again stood strong as an educational leader and confidante to Dr. Julie Kuchenberger. As together, they began to navigate not just a national crisis, but a worldwide pandemic. In June of 2020, it was Patty who bravely stood alongside Dr. Kuchenberger and others to reopen the schools for our extended school year program before any other districts were willing to do the same. What is remarkable to me is that these amazing accomplishments represent only 20 of half of Patty's career of 40 years. Those of us who have looked to Patty for strength and courage will forever see her as our confidante, a true champion for inclusion and for least restrictive environment for all children. On behalf of more than 100 of her colleagues, I share with you this gift. Not only is this legacy cheer meant as a legacy to your time here in Melrose, but as a legacy for every seed of knowledge you have planted on behalf of each child and each educator you have mentored. You truly have planted the seeds of knowledge that will last all of us a lifetime.
It's been a bad thing to film.
I just want to thank Donna. I want to thank all the members of the school committee, present and past, all of the administrators, present and past, and truly, most importantly, our students and their families who have given me the opportunity to make a difference for kids here in Melrose. So thank you all so much. It's been an honor to be part of the Melrose Public Schools.
Thank you, Patty, and I also want to thank your children and your husband for all that they have sacrificed in your 40 years as an educator. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Patty's not done yet, though. We're going to ask her to do a presentation later. Moving on, I did want to invite some members of our community up to talk to us about Melrose Kind. We're looking forward to Melrose Kind Day on November 20th of this year, and I know that there's many ideas already being generated to celebrate across the city and within the schools.
Thank you for having me. My name's Stephanie Nelson, and I'm the co-founder of Melrose Kind, a new nonprofit here in town. I've been told I have five minutes, so let me get right to the point. Kindness, that's it. You don't need me to sit here and tell you that there are going to be disagreements. The electricity around this current Halloween topic is palpable, and I can assure you that every person here, every person watching, has a valid opinion and an interesting perspective, perhaps even a story that illustrates something that we don't know or we haven't covered. But here's the thing, without kindness, that passion and that conviction, it's lost, and it can be destructive. Once we start the name-calling, no one hears anything else. November 20th is Melrose Random Acts of Kindness Day. This is our sixth annual citywide celebration. My partner and friend, Mary Beth Darwin, started this mission, and I'm proud to be part of something that continues to evolve and thankfully, has no ceiling. Now more than ever, and I mean even tonight, today, this week, we could benefit from starting with kindness. As I mentioned, we have exciting news to announce. We're an official nonprofit. We hope to fund kindness initiatives throughout the year, pen pal projects between seniors and students, adopt-a-sites, and so many more ideas. We welcome ideas and collaborations, so please reach out. But I am getting ahead of myself. I'm here today to ask you to start to get excited about it. Think about ways you can participate. We've got many projects that need kindness warriors to own. Showing love to our police, showering appreciation to the fire department, the DPW, the post office, the hospital, and so many more. Do you want one of those projects? Please email us. We'll give you an assignment, something that'll make you feel good. And before you naysayers and keyboard warriors are typing SMH, shaking my head, I ask you to just give kindness a try. Not sugary, sweet lip service, but tangible actions done simply to make someone smile. You might be surprised at how good it makes you feel. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple other things I wanted to share with the community tonight. We will be conducting a culture and climate survey district-wide. We have a team of folks in the Melrose Public Schools that have been working on this internally for the past several weeks. We've tested it out with our leadership team. There's an elementary survey for students in grades 3 to 5. There's also a secondary survey that will be shared with students, a staff survey, and a survey for families. This is a practice that we have been talking about for a number of months and really wanting to make sure that we're not only looking at student learning data or demographic data, but that we're also looking at perceptions data. And we know that the only way for us to get that information is to ask. So in the next coming weeks, we'll finalize those surveys, taking the feedback from our leadership team to refine them further. And then we'll be disseminating them out to the community. There will be reminders to encourage high levels of participation, and we'll start with staff probably as soon as next week and then work our way out to the community through students and families as well. Additionally, I'm excited to announce that two of our accelerated repair program applications have been tentatively approved. We have a meeting tomorrow morning with the MSBA board to find out specifically. But the two projects that are eligible for approval are the Hoover, replacement of the Hoover roof and replacement of the Horace Mann roof. These are two projects that are desperately needed, and we're excited to have the support and additional funding that may come along with the accelerated repair program. Today, we learned from Commissioner Riley that the mask mandate has been extended through January 15th. We're also eagerly anticipating vaccination approval for our youngest students, ages 5 to 11. Not sure if that happened today or not.
It did.
They did approve it?
Yep.
Awesome. Haven't had a chance to look. And so the idea behind the extension of the mandate is to get us through the holidays, allow for our youngest learners to access the vaccine if that's the choice that families are making, and then also get us through the winter holidays with a few weeks back in school, and then it'll be revisited again. So it's official today, the mask mandate is extended through January 15th. And then lastly, I just wanted to say a few words about Halloween. I have received tons of emails and media requests. I've been doing my best to reply to as many as possible, but I know that I haven't had a chance to reach everyone. The one thing I wanted to say is that we're not canceling Halloween. We're not saying that Halloween's not a valid celebration for families. I myself celebrate Halloween outside of school with my family, as do many of our educators. Our intent here is just to make sure that we're not centering everything that we do during the fall season around Halloween alone. We're trying to allow our staff to think critically about what we celebrate in our schools and why, how we utilize our school day to its maximum potential, and also how we celebrate and have joyful activities with our students. We know that all of those things are important as we work to build community. So Halloween's not banned. We're not saying you can't say Halloween or read books about Halloween or even do Halloween crafts. What we are saying is that we're not going to center everything that we do during the fall around one particular holiday. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kuchenberger, are there any questions from the committee for the superintendent on her report? Mr. Obramsky, please.
Just on the topic of Halloween, I'm not going to belabor it. I'm just going to speak to the, more to the communication of it and the transparency of it. And I think that's really part of it. It's not the only part, but for some people, it's the subject itself. But for a lot of people, it was the communication and the lack of involvement of those schools where it was impacted. And I think that's really what the administration has to focus on, is the transparency and the inclusion of families in these decisions. And I know that not every decision within the school can involve families all the time. You have to make administrative decisions. But I think that when you have traditions and rituals and routines, and then those are suddenly removed, that's what upsets families. And I think that's what we heard this week. And I think that's really what we have to communicate to people, that we will be more transparent and we will communicate better. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Broder?
Not on the topic of Halloween, but Stephanie, if you're still here, kind of inspired me to talk about this a little bit, and it's the roofs. Because when we hear about, you know, some of the things that we do, some of the stuff is really interesting and cool. We're building a new middle school, or we're doing a playground, or whatever the case may be. The government wonk in me feels like, I gotta say, doing the roofs is a big deal. It is a very, very expensive proposition, and to be able to take advantage of some of these SBA funds in addition to the way the city's financially planned to be able to do the match that we need to pull this off is really a big deal. And I know, you know, within a year of buying our house, the hot water heater blew, and we had to do the whole roof. And that is not, as you might imagine, what we had in mind. But you gotta do it, and I'm very, very excited that we're doing that very boring, but very important thing, fixing those roofs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Rosy Thomas, please.
When, if and when will we get to look at the climate survey? Like the actual questions, and I know we'll get the responses eventually, but... And I know we'll get the responses eventually, but could we get a sample of some of the questions?
Sure, absolutely. We're still refining them, but I'm happy to include that in the next agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, I just had a couple things to mention on your report. Thank you. First of all, let me just express, I know we'll have continued opportunities to do this throughout the meeting, but the committee's appreciation, gratitude, and thanks to Ms. White-Lambright for her tremendous service to the district and her 40 years as an educator, and also thank you to Principal Russo and all of her colleagues who participated in that beautiful tribute. Thank you all, and thank you to Patty's family as well for being here. And please do not be a stranger to us in Melrose. In fact, I already asked Patty if I could give her a call, if I needed to talk to her, so thank you. Thank you to Stephanie and Melrose Kind as well. Stephanie, if you send me a website and email address, I'll make sure those are in the minutes so that folks can reference that if they want to get in touch with you. Thank you for that. And finally, on the topic of Halloween, thank you for addressing that, Superintendent, and to the folks who emailed us and who spoke tonight. I think I would just add to what Mr. Obramsky and others have said, that I think we, you know, I'm looking forward to the review that you're going to be conducting with the principals. I think it's important that that review is very transparent, that the entire community gets to provide input and thought around that, and that, and I also think that as we move forward, thinking about not just how we communicate these decisions, but the timing, this is something that you and I have talked about, that the timing of these decisions is really important, that, you know, a decision regarding even a broadening of the fall festivities, which I support, during the month of October, is, it lands a little hard for folks who are trying to plan and room parents and all that. So, just the timing is really important, the transparency, and, and, you know, I think also just more opportunities for all of us to continue to learn about holidays, and also, as you're working through that process, if there is , are changes that need to come before the committee for consideration in the student handbook, which is where our holiday policy currently lies, we would be interested in seeing those changes and talking with you, or if we need a policy in our policy manual around celebrations and holidays, we should consider that. So, just so the community understands that that's where the committee's role is, is in the policy, and the superintendent and her team implement those policies. So, we're looking forward to this not being the end of the discussion, and thank you so much for that.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Any other final comments this time? Seeing none, moving forward to our consent agenda, which tonight includes the school committee regular meeting minutes of October 12th, 2021, policy JBD, gender identity support, and the warrants as follows: Fiscal 22 S22017 and the amount of $7.35, warrant S22018 and the amount of $1,063.36, warrant S22019 and the amount of $747,564.57, the September debit credit card number two and the amount of $91.56, and warrant S22021 and the amount of $4,800. Are there any items that any member wants to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Obramsky, please.
Remove the minutes from the October 12th.
The minutes will go to announcements of the chair. Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda made by Mr. O'Connell, seconded by Ms. Razi Thomas? All in favor? And that carries unanimously with one absent. Thank you all. Next up is the work of our subcommittees, and up first is educational programs and personnel with Mr. O'Connell and Mr. Obramsky. Thank you.[863.88][863.88][applause] Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Same.[885.94][885.94][laughter]
Hello, folks. Welcome to the educational programs and personnel portion of our program. First up, we have a MEKO update, and I see Ms. Amy Jackson in the audience. Ms. Jackson, if you could come forward. Superintendent, do you want to introduce this, or are we just going to hand this over to Ms. Jackson?
We're ready to roll.
We're ready to roll. Ms. Jackson, welcome. Thanks for being with us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Jackson. I'm the MEKO director. I'm here to provide just an overview of the program for this past year. So, first, I'll start with the enrollment. We currently have 116 students in the program, 33 are in elementary school, 33 in the middle school, and 50 at the high school, which we have six seniors this year. We have, currently have 16 at Hoover, eight students at Lincoln, three at Roosevelt, and six at Winthrop. Enrollment at the elementary schools are depending on available seats. In this past year, we added seven new students from kindergarten through eighth grade. Next, we just want to start off with the highlights of the year. We started off with a fabulous summer program with 25 of our lovely middle school students, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We had a five-week program. We'll be focused on ELA and math, and also enrichment in the afternoon. The students read two fabulous books, Look Both Ways by Jason Reynolds, Turtles All the Way Down by John Green, which was a part of the ELO curriculum, and students focused on completing their summer math work, which included math IXL lessons. During enrichment time, we invited a local artist with the students who worked on an art project that was focused on the two books they read, and we also had a presenter to come in to work with students on self-awareness, medication techniques, and life skills. And that presenter was actually one of our MEKO parents. It was a phenomenal session. The students loved it. The students had such a great time in the five weeks. They can't wait to come back this summer. Next thing, I submitted a grant to MEKO, Inc. to bring in a presenter from Dialogues of Diversity. His name was Ron Jones. He ran two sessions with our high school students, and the session is called Get Out of Our Bubble. It's a game show that talks about, they introduce students on new and open ways just to talk about cultural differences. It was really fun because it was sort of a game show, student won prizes, and the students were really into it. And it was two fun sessions, and the students were able to either go online, and they could chime in in the chat, they could answer the questions, they could ask them questions. It was really fun and entertaining, and the students had a really good time. Next, in collaboration with the Friends of Melrose MEKO, we continue to meet with the Boston families as well as the Melrose families. We had a fabulous event this past May. We're in partnership with Follow Your Arts, Community Studio, and Circus Up. Circus Up had many workshops that the students were able to get on stilts. They were able to see different circus activities, and the kids and families had a really good time. We had our local artists, Stephen Elders, who worked with all the families. They presented parklets that were actually, after everyone completed them, they were hung on Main Street in Melrose, which was really nice that the families would come in Melrose, they can see all their little art designs, actually saw mine, which was really cool.[1117.08][1117.08][laughter] And this past Sunday, we had doubleheader. It was game day. We had several of the Boston families come out. We had Mayor Broder Ashley join us, and some other of our school committee members. It was so nice to see you there, and the families enjoyed theirselves. And other families, after that, they walked over for the Melrose Alliance Against Violence visuals, and a lot of families went over, and they said they had a really good time, and they were excited about it. And I'm just so excited to continue to work with Friends of Melrose MEKO, and we're in the process of planning an event in Boston this coming May. And the families are very excited and can't wait to come to Boston. We have a lot of fun activities for them. Next, I partnered with New Generations Consulting and Associates to start a Melrose MEKO parent support group, and this group is just for parents. It's a confidential safe space for parents just to talk about issues they face with their children, just learning about this, how our children are in Boston, they live in Boston, they go to school in a different town, and the students and the parents deal with a lot of things. So, it's a safe space for parents just to really talk, because a lot of parents feel like, it's just my child. But once they talk to other parents, they really understand that it's not, and they feel a lot better. And this, we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was really nice. The parents were really just open, just having really good dialogue. Sonia Patton, she's the counselor and life coach, and the fun thing about her is she is an alumni of MEKO. She's also a parent, so she really understands, and she gets it, and the parents can really relate to her. We had a really good discussion. It was only supposed to go an hour. We were on the phone for two hours. So, it went really well. The parents are really excited, and they were like, we gotta tell more parents so we can get more parents on the call for the next one. And we're going to do this every single month. Next, I'm excited to report that I'm still in the Diversity Equity Task Force. We're in our second year. We've been meeting on a monthly basis. Excited to share the four drafts of our goals, and we're also working on Infinity Groups for our middle school and high school students as well as our staff, and that's coming. We had a meeting with the high school principal and the middle school principal, and we're going to partner with some teachers, and we're going to start those groups soon. And that's what I have for you right now.
Terrific. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. This is really great stuff. Any comments or questions from the committee? Ms. Razi Thomas, please.
This is, I'm really amazed at how much you've gotten done in such a short amount of time since you became the director, and also during a pandemic, and so, thank you so much for your service to, to our, to our district and for doing such a great job with the MEKO program. I'm really curious just about how the students within the MEKO program have done through the pandemic. Just kind of curious about how they're doing, how the families are doing, because it's just been such a hard time for everyone, so.
Well, the students are definitely happy to be back in the building.
Yeah.
Very excited. A lot of students did not participate when they were able to come back, just even in the hybrid, so the families are excited to have the students back in the building. A lot of the students lost family members during this time, so it was a very, very difficult time. So, that was the whole point of having this support group for the families, to help them and also support their children through this. But other than that, everyone's happy to be back in the building. The parents are excited to have the students back, so it's going really well.
And the summer program was a huge success from the start.
Oh, we had such a good time. So, I was the coordinator of the program. I really enjoyed just spending the time with the kids, especially with all the students not being in the building. So, I spent like two hours with them every single day, and I loved it. I learned so much about them. They learned so much about me. We had a really good time. And they were already asking, they were like, Ms. Jackson, are you going to do it again? Absolutely. I can't wait.
Thank you for your leadership.
Oh, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? I actually have a question, and maybe it's a superintendent question more than a Ms. Jackson question, perhaps both of you. How does enrollment work? You know, and I'm sure that's a big question with a complicated answer, but I see Hoover, Lincoln, Roosevelt, Winthrop. I obviously don't see Horace Mann or Franklin. I know space is beyond tight, but how do we get that, how does it ever start? Do we just have to wait until enrollment goes down? And the reason I ask is because I think there's a huge benefit to our schools to be participants, act participants in this program. And I feel some regret that Horace Mann and Franklin, at least at present, doesn't have that benefit. How will that play out over time? Is there any answer to that?
So, space is definitely part of the equation. Amy could talk about the whole process from the perspective of our families who live in Boston, but here in the district, we actually wanted to apply for a MEKO expansion grant, but as we looked at our available space, we looked at our projected enrollment numbers, we didn't feel that we had the capacity to really apply for that grant and reap the full benefits of it. But we try to fill as many seats as we can each year, and we do look at not only where's their space, but we also want to make sure that we're not putting one student in one school where they're feeling alone or don't have that.
Sure, yeah.
Other students that they can relate to, collaborate with, connect with, be in the same class with. But space is definitely a big driver for us. Amy?
And Amy, just so you know, I don't need to know about the process.
Okay.
By which students get into MEKO or get assigned here. It's really, you know, our piece of it. And ultimately, the question is, when are we going to see students at Horace Mann? And I hear what you're saying, Superintendent. I don't want to see one student, him, her, theirself, at Horace Mann, but looking at it makes me wonder, how do you ever get there? How do you, how do you get that started? There's obviously no siblings there. There's no one there. So, perhaps food for further thought and discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Any further or final comments from the committee? Ms. Jackson, you're doing a great job. Keep it up, and thank you so much for being with us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
And next up, under Educational Programs and Personnel, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and Programmatic Updates. And I see we have Ms. White-Lambright, Ms. Berman, and Mr. Fogarty with us. Any introduction to this, Superintendent, or are we just going right at it?
We're going to jump right in. Obviously, this is a little bit of passing of the torch here with Ms. Berman joining Ms. Lambright on her final school committee presentation. Stephen and Patty have been working with our SWAC, which is our, oh, I'm going to forget what that stands for, but our health, our wellness and advisory committee, and looking at the data. You're going to see the data presented a little bit differently this year, but that's because we have some projects in the pipeline that they will speak about tonight. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Stephen, Patty, and Carrie.
Thank you, Lee. All right, excellent. So, thank you, and yes, this is a historic presentation. This is the only presentation that you will have that includes two assistant superintendents for Puble Personnel Services.[1602.22][1602.22][laughter] So, I am honored to present some information tonight and be joined by Stephen Fogarty, and I welcome Carrie Berman as the assistant incoming. Are you still, we were like feeling we should wear t-shirts or something tonight, but.
In training.
Yeah. No, you're it.
I'm in, yes.
You're it, okay? So, I'm, but I really am privileged to have Carrie here presenting with us this evening.
And if we could keep those microphones close.
Oh, yes.
That would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So, we will, I just wanted to frame it a little bit for you this evening. So, really what we're providing to you this evening is kind of an update on where we are with the YRBS process. As you know, we participate with having the YRBS every two years within the district, and this time, and I think we look back, and we head back to 1997, maybe, we have many years of data around the YRBS. And we've had an opportunity, thanks to work through our School Wellness Advisory Council. Jess Hoffman has offered to support us with some of her work with PhD students, and they will be, we're going to share with them some data so that we can get some, a longitudinal kind of look at YRBS data over several years. So, this evening, we wanted to provide you with some, just a little bit of information because this is typically the time we do share information with you around YRBS. And we've chosen to kind of focus on mental health and provide you with some key information around that, and also how we are using YRBS data to help drive the decisions that we do. In addition, there are some questions that we were able to include as part of the Middle Sex League, specific to COVID. So, we don't have longitudinal data on those, so we thought we would share that information with you. So, we were able to add on a few questions, specific to COVID, and again, thinking about topics that we have talked about here many times, the impact on our students coming back to school, and specifically how it's been impacting mental health. So, that's our presentation for this evening, with more information to come, and we will also share with you the entire YRBS information. And we will also share with you the entire YRBS information.
Thank you. So the CDC continues to create the YRBS, the biennial administration of it. This particular version was created by John Snow Incorporated. It was administered by the Melrose Public Schools as well as the Middle Sex League, and it was funded entirely by the Lahey Clinic. Our ninth through 12th graders took the YRBS, as well as our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the middle school. The core of the survey is based on risk behaviors and protective behaviors. Alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, unintentional injuries, mental health, unhealthy dietary behaviors, sexual behavior, bullying and violence, and some of the more protective behaviors are trusted relationships, academics, sleep, screen time, physical activity, and overall perception of these behaviors.
So again, as I talked, we wanna focus, if you wanna go to the next slide, wanted to focus our attention on some of the mental health questions that were posed. One, can we go back?
I'm not sure that I can.
Okay, all right. Okay, so.
Let's not keep going back.
Yep, that's okay. One more. Perfect. Thank you so much. So again, focusing on mental health of our students. And so one of the issues that we have talked about here before is the idea of suicide. And I have said before you, you know, one student thinking about harming themselves is one too many. And so what are those efforts that we can put in place? And the YRBS is a good, consistent kind of check-in to see what that data's looking like. And again, we'll be providing that longitudinal kind of look at this issue. But the numbers, again, in a particularly stressful time, thinking about how students are considering committing suicide ever for middle school or over the past 12 months, that 13 to 21% of Melrose students did something to purposely hurt themselves without wanting to die. But thinking about that is a significant piece and is a step in that kind of overall process. If you're thinking about, you know, harming yourself in some way, and certainly not within this presentation, but part of that is then our job is thinking of what are those underlying causes? You know, what's the reason behind kids feeling like that? So this is important information for us to think about and then to think about what we need to do as a school district and quite frankly, as a community, to support our students. And just, again, this is a broad stroke, that 10th grade students are more likely to report purposely hurting themselves without wanting to die, and 7th graders were more likely to consider suicide. And I think, if you go on to the next slide, gives you more of the breakdown. And these numbers are not comfortable numbers, I believe, to be looking at. And again, wanting to have an understanding of what, how we take this information and what plans we make. Next slide. So again, this is made a plan or attempted suicide in the past 12 months. And overall, 7% of Melrose students report having made a suicide attempt. And the results of this survey indicate that eight high school attempts resulted in an injury. These are serious numbers to be looking at and important for us to consider as we think about how we can support our students. Next slide. This slide, what I wanna highlight in particular, so this is a breakdown more specifically of the information. And I think the startling number in this slide is the percentage of gender queer students is significantly higher than any other group. Again, thinking about how do we support our students who are transitioning, who identify as gender queer, is an important consideration for our planning at the secondary level. This slide is actual attempts of suicide. And again, pointing out the highest group is gender queer. So highlights not only the mental health issue around the struggle of suicide, but the specific groups that may be more impacted and require a high need of support from us. So part of the YRBS also asks, how do students seek support? Because you look at those numbers and I think they're pretty concerning and startling. And so we want to also get information about how students are accessing support. So on the positive side, most Melrose students report that they have coping strategies to relieve stress. The majority of Melrose students, and again, those numbers aren't 51 to 63%, have at least one teacher or other adult at school that they can talk to. But conversely, although that's more than half, again, thinking about then who are the kids who don't feel that way? I also think this is an interesting point to think about and have discussion, particularly given that this survey was done during a pandemic and considering how students, who were particularly 6th graders and 9th graders, had been in that building for the first time in a very non-traditional manner and may in fact have been in a remote learning environment for the entire school year. So what was the impact of that in this kind of reporting? A high percentage of our students report that they feel comfortable talking to at least one of their parents. As we know, support for students is not just about what happens in school, clearly, but what happens at home and what happens within the community. 6 to 18% of Melrose students are taking medication or receiving some type of counseling treatment to address some of their concerns. Okay, and these are just the breakdown of their way to access treatment.
Right. All right. So just gonna, a quick overview of, I believe, some of the coronavirus-specific questions that were part of the YRBS this year, or last year, last spring. So as we stated before, these were added by the Middle Sex League Schools and the consultant that worked with them. Interesting question here, during the coronavirus pandemic, how often was a student's mental health not good? Tough way, I think, to categorize that. But again, I think when we look at the visuals that we can present, we can see those certain populations of students within, you know, again, that LGBTQ community. Some of our other, you know, are very concerning within that group of students. And they did, you know, they self-identify during this. So continued trend that we're seeing across most of the questions. This was for the high school. And then if we look again, pretty similar in terms of the middle school stats that come out. So we're really trying to think about as, and we're gonna talk about some of the next steps that came out of the YRBS, but some of the things that we're really concentrating and thinking about as we look at this data. So pretty interesting question here as well. During the past 12 months, did any of these things happen to you? Again, I think the visual really does this justice. But the one that's almost, you know, furthest to the right or second in, the student's family member or a close friend died. We're looking at, again, a high school student or a middle school student. Pretty large part of our population lost someone that they considered who was very, very close to them. And that's certainly very concerning. Some of those other numbers, maybe some of our students in Melrose weren't as affected as other area communities. But certainly, you know, there was a lot of serious illness and a lot of loss that happened during this time. So some of the things that we're doing, the decision-making and moving forward, and how we can support our students and families best. So we have, Melrose Public Schools has done some work with the NAN project before. We did Mental Health 101 with them two years ago, I believe it was, pre-pandemic, on one of the early release days where people were invited in. That is one of those opportunities that's presented to teachers that they can take advantage of, paraprofessionals, different people. But it was not mandatory, so to speak. But this is going to be, all secondary staff are gonna attend this training next week, on the second. And QPR is all about question, persuade, and refer. So it's not clinical, but it's a suicide prevention tool. And it's something that all of our teachers, educator, staff members are gonna become familiar with so that we can really support the people who may be dealing with these mental health challenges. I'm gonna turn it over to Stephen for our next opportunity.
So in addition to the NAN project, we've worked with SOS and Signs of Suicide within the middle school, but we're gonna expand that program into the high school this year. We wanna thank Ms. Dobbins for securing a grant to make sure that will happen for our students and staff. And, you know, all staff will be trained on this instrument. And we feel it's important because these students have relationships with various people, various capacities. And we're excited to bring that program to the high school. The, there's a question that the great Dr. Wolf, our school physician, talks about every year, is, is there an adult in the building or a teacher that you feel you have a relationship that's trusted that you can have a serious conversation with? And we found this year, this past spring, that about 63% of the high schoolers have that relationship. And we found that about half of the middle schoolers have that relationship. Some of these answers are obvious. Some of them are not so obvious as to why that's going on with the pandemic. And a major focus of what we're doing is trying to build better relationships, better community. And that's a major focus for what we're doing. The discussion started this summer with the leadership retreat. We had many faculty, staff, school nurses there as well. This information was shared, it was discussed. And for some people, it was the first time seeing data like this. And for others, you know, you deal with this every day. And that was the first step. The wellness department has been looking at this data since the school year began. We spent two department meetings, broken up by grade level and crossed the grades to discuss this. How can we create better opportunities for our students to meet more people, to have more trusted relationships? So in the middle school, Project Impact slash World the Difference is a program that we had. We're kind of revitalized with the Anti-Defamation League. With extended team time, a major focus is to build community and relationships during that time. School counselors are meeting with students more regularly. Guidance Department in the middle school has social emotional learning, grade-based lessons that will be rolled out shortly. And then there's just other opportunities for student interests, such as all the clubs and activities that go on in the middle school, and then intramurals and working in conjunction with our partners at the Melrose Recreation Department to provide opportunity and healthy alternatives to what's going on. Maybe less screen time, and certainly more exercise and activity. At the high school, it kind of mirrors some of this. And again, the focus is to build better connections and relationships to improve community. Project Impact, student, peer, mentors, okay, doing the right thing. And giving the students the tools necessary to lead their friends, their peers, in the right direction. Crew is something new at the high school. We're a month and a half into that right now. It's a grade-based community of students, learning from one another, experiencing specific opportunities. School councils, again, small group and one-on-one opportunities to meet with students. We currently have about 80 different clubs and activities. And many of these are student-driven, where they latch on to a faculty member that will guide them in the right directions. And of course, you know, we have a robust athletic program that we want to see grow and flourish with more opportunity as well. So there is more information to come. We're looking at some of the longitudinal data that we have, and, you know, we look forward to sharing that with you. But this is just a snapshot of what's going on. You know, it's been hard times for many, and we're looking for ways to make it better.
Very good. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Any comments or questions from the committee? Ms. Rosetta Thomas, then Ms. McAndrew.
Thank you so much. This is really critical to discuss, this issue of suicidal thought, suicidal action. And it's so important for us to be able to talk about this with our children, with students, and make this not, we have to get rid of it as a taboo subject. It is not true that if you talk about suicide that you're gonna cause someone to become suicidal. And that's like, really great that you guys are willing to come up here and start to talk about the data from the YRBS, especially since we, you know, know that mental health problems are at a huge, enormous tidal wave level. And that's just as true for the adults as it is for our students. So I really appreciate that you have the NAN project coming in. I just, my school did the SOS program with my students on Monday. They're both great resources. And I think it's just as important to pay attention to the adults as it is to the students. So if you're training the staff, they know that they can also help each other. We can't help each other enough right now. The pandemic has gone on way too long, and people are really worn out. So I just have a couple of questions. So thank you, first of all. Second of all, I'm just checking, you have one category of gender queer students. Do you mean lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, and questioning students? Or do you mean students who are non-binary and, you know, transgender or non-binary? Just curious about that one category, and then a couple other questions, too.
Yeah, so this is the categories that were developed by CDC. And I think it, the gender queer was, the description behind it was to be as expansive as possible.
So the umbrella term for LGBTQ?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just checking that. I'm really curious, because I know that there's also this very big problem within the mental health world for outpatient providers being completely maxed out and there's not enough outpatient providers. How are you doing providing linkages from school to mental health providers? How's that going?
So I would say that I have heard from many districts, first of all, our staffing even within the district, challenges of people being able to have enough school psychologists, social workers, adjustment counselors, all of those pieces. We're fortunate that we have been able to maintain and hire and secure our staffing within the district. So that's a good piece. And it is, we are hearing from families that they're having challenges. If they're seeking, you know, we certainly have families who already have established relationships with providers outside of school, but families seeking to establish a new relationship. Unfortunately, some. Unfortunately, some are meeting with more success than others, but there's definitely a challenge, and families are waiting. We also have students who have been hospitalized and may require a higher level of support following the hospitalization, and they are waiting extended period of times in the hospitals, waiting to access the supports because there just is not room in programs. And I think there's this whole trickle effect that the programs don't have enough staff to provide what they typically have done. So it's, it's again, you know, certainly supporting and providing parents and helping them to make those connections, but I think our best pieces are, again, what are the proactive supports that we can do? Pieces like putting in SOS, providing crew, having kids feel connected with each other. I think those are all the supports that help people to feel part of the community and that they have people that they can talk to.
Thank you. The other question I had is, how different are these numbers, the suicidality and numbers in this data set in comparison to previous years, pre-pandemic?
So that will be part of the information that you get, but I did, I mean, part of why we talked about and chose, you know, the numbers are higher this year, and in some cases, double what they had been pre-pandemic the last time we did the YRBS. And so again, you know, I think that's why it's important to actually take even kind of that broader look. So what piece of the impact of the pandemic has this had on the results of the YRBS? But, you know, getting that big, longer-term picture. And then, moving on, Stephen and Carrie will be looking at what's the impact. I'm hoping that the numbers are looking different the next time Melrose does the YRBS.
Thank you so much.
Ms. McAndrew, and then Ms. Obranski.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here with us and for this report. And I have a couple of comments and one question. I'll do my question first, which is, on the slide with the trusted adult numbers, which showed, and that's asking about a trusted adult at school, right? Showed a pretty, a lower number at the middle school than the high school. I guess I'm interested in your thoughts on what you attribute that to, that gap, if anything? What you're thinking about in terms of, you know, increasing that percentage, and if, how that compares to previous years, if you've asked that question in the past?
The question has been asked in the past, and it is down, and some of the things that come off the top of the head right away, these students started remotely. So a third of that building, you know, was not in person, and then when they finally did arrive, you know, you're seeing half their face, like all the other buildings in most of the world. So, challenges for sure, and we're trying to get over that hurdle and create better relationships, you know? It hasn't, it's been hard. Everything is. And what can we do to make it better? And those are the things that we've been bouncing around the room for a long time, and trying to create more positive opportunities and experiences that work to make those connections.
I was thinking about this piece particularly, how there's so many factors that contribute, but I was also thinking about how we were not able to provide our typical summer programming. So one of the pieces that I particularly have enjoyed in the past is our Students Without Border program, where I think it's an excellent opportunity for incoming sixth graders. So students who were fifth graders that summer before, participating in that summer programming, gives them an opportunity to become familiar with the program, to start making connections with peers, to start making connections with adults, start feeling connected as part of the middle school. That didn't happen. You know, we were not able to provide that kind of transition support that we typically do from fifth grade to sixth grade. I think those are steps that, again, we can think about the importance of providing that for incoming students. And, again, digging into some of those data, is that a higher number also? And I'm not a statistician by any means, but also interested that, I did want to highlight, we also included the sixth graders. If you look to our past YRBS, we had not included sixth graders before, but quite frankly, this information is important for us to know for all of our secondary students.
Can I add just one more thing? So I was actually surprised during the summer when we looked at those numbers, and I was shocked, especially at the high school, but that only 60, almost 63% of our students felt close to one adult. I was shocked because I felt like that was something I thought we did a good job on, so I'm not sure how the pandemic impacted that. I will also just wanted to add for, at the middle school, that their electives or off-team classes were virtual, I think for the entire year. So oftentimes, a chorus, a band, an art teacher, those are who pull out in students and have some of those different conversations when we can get them, you know, into something that they may be more interested in, and they may be able to form a better relationship with. So I'm wondering if, by not having those in person, if that impacted how students also responded to this? Because their virtual experience remain longer than both our elementary students and our high school students.
Excellent, thank you. And extracurriculars as well, probably, same point, right? Thank you. I'm interested in the, I'm so glad to hear that all secondary staff are going to be trained on the NAN project. And, you know, what I'm thinking about, and I'm interested in your thoughts on when I'm looking at that, is that, you know, especially these issues, these concerns, they don't just magically start at sixth grade. So I'm interested in thinking about, you know, what are we doing in the elementary around some of this? Age-appropriate, of course, but are we thinking about training any of our elementary staff, maybe fifth grade or instructional coaches or others, mental health staff? Or is there another program that we should be doing for elementary students? And also how and if, what sort of information do we provide to parents and opportunities for parents to be either trained or at least to get information about some of these programs? Just so they can reinforce the messaging that you're, you know, that you're putting forward at school.
I could take some of that. The, it was interesting. We have not presented this information to the elementary principals before, and the else, some of the, many of the elementary nurses were there, and they ate this up. They were really highly engaged in this activity and had a lot of interest. So, I'm sure they're seeing much of this, and, you know, they didn't really have access to it at a prior date. So, we had a lot of great breakout conversations about this and strength, talking about strengthening those relationships. So, I think you will see more work going that direction. In the wellness classes in the elementary, certainly the conversations in second grade are very different than the conversations going on in fifth grade, and, you know, they're working on this material as well, the wellness teachers, and you'll see more pointed discussions, lessons involved to try to bridge that gap a little bit.
And I would just add that our support staff, our social workers, our school psychologists, our adjustment counselors and our counselors, you know, work as a professional learning community, and so have opportunities within, across the district to discuss and share resources and information. Part of that conversation of even doing the YRBS for sixth graders was, again, I think our lens from 10 years ago might have been, oh, sixth graders, you know, we don't want to, you know, ask some of these questions, or we don't want to get some of this information there. No, I think we need to, and I think we, you know, again, more proactive, not just at the secondary level, but at the elementary level as well. And we had talked about, actually, should we include elementary in this training as well, those group? And we actually thought we would break that out for another time because some of it may be a bit different of a presentation of how you would do, like the training that they're going to have at the elementary versus the secondary.
Great, thank you. And just finally to reinforce a point that we talked about at one of our previous meetings recently, actually related more to COVID response, but we do have funds available through the SRA3 grant, and we, I think, maybe others would agree on the committee, that if there are additional resources, staff, I completely appreciate the points about, and have talked with the superintendent about the hiring situation and the availability of staff right now, but if there are things that we can do, that we need to use those funds, we can use them over the next three years to deploy additional staff resources, I think I would like to hear as one committee member about those opportunities, because I'm very concerned about some of what we're finding here, as I know you and your colleagues are as well. So, thank you, and just please know that as you move forward in your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Obranski.
Yeah, no, it's extremely concerning. I'm actually extremely surprised. So, in terms of the, we're doing a school climate survey soon. Is it possible to include stuff in there on student engagement? And I guess it would have to be, wouldn't have, you'd have to have, it couldn't be anonymous at that point. So is there a way to survey the students on their engagement within the school and see if they're actually involved in activities within the school? And if they're not, is it possible to, like, we've added crew, which is fantastic, like, I think that's phenomenal. Somebody brought up to me, like, boys volleyball recently. I know, like, prep schools, they do, like, a freshman, a JV, and then they have diversity, but then they have, like, a three team, they call it, like, the third, like, is it possible to, like, through the ESA funds, like, why can't we increase the amount of activities and increase student engagement in order to get these kids in front of adults and off the phones and out of the house? Like, I mean, we have to re-engage the kids, like, at some point, and I'm sure, like, these results aren't just in Melrose, like, we're, I mean, once we do comparison data, I'm sure we're going to see it in other communities as well, but it is extremely concerning. And I'm a big believer in engagement, student engagement, and, you know, trying to get the kids involved within the community, but it has to start early, and it has to start in middle school. And I really think, like, increasing the amount of activities, even if we have to increase the amount of teams, you have an A team, a B team, a C team, in order to get kids supported and increase drama activities if we have to. If there's one play and not everybody made it, add another play, like, at this point, like, because it's definitely concerning, and, you know, it's something to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a very, it's a good point, and, you know, when we do sometimes look at problems, you do want to look at what are those kind of root pieces, and what are those underlying steps that we can take? So although we're having challenges, you know, finding, maybe like if we said, oh, yes, I want to hire X amount of social workers or school psychologists, I'd probably have a challenge trying to accomplish that. But maybe there's some ways to expand some of that engagement, student engagement, in different ways, and we certainly will continue that train of thought and engagement.
Right, and it's not like, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to increase the workload dramatically, but I also think that, you know, under the circumstances, there is some room where we can work, and is it even possible to engage, like, ask the students, you know, what activities are you engaged in? And if they're not engaged in any, is it possible for the guidance councils to connect with them and say, what would you like to see here? And what can we do to make this place, you know?
We did do some of that. I was just thinking of the survey I know that they had done at the high school during their crew time around resiliency. And part of that, I don't know all of the questions, but we certainly can take a look at, are we getting that information about student engagement? Because that is one of those under, having people, kids feel connected is a really important strategy in helping kids to develop healthy ways of dealing with their stress, of feeling that they can speak to somebody, that they're connected with an adult. It's critical work. So thank you, John, for that.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, I know that the NIASC team was just out at the high school the beginning of October, and through the quick kind of one-page piece that, I don't know, I don't think it's been disseminated, not finalized yet, but the chair and the visiting team in sharing with us, the kind of our recap, was very impressed by the students and how they did feel connected to the high school. So although that's anecdotal evidence at this exact moment in time, I think that we will see some evidence come out of that NIASC report that's going to look much better than the evidence that we had during the pandemic. So I'm happy that we can hopefully see some of that soon.
And I think that's why this is so surprising, because it does, like, it seems like there's so much off it, and...
I was shocked.
Right, it's just, right, I'm shocked, right. Thank you.
Just to reframe it slightly.
Yeah.
I mean, this was given last spring, and then we started that school year remote, and we started drawing them back in. It took a while.
Right.
There is a complete different vibe down there right now as to what's going on. It's certainly, I would say, a much more normal, much more traditional school year, and there is a different feeling.
Thank, that's important. Thanks for pointing that out and bringing us back a little bit, because I think it is important to recognize that this was done, you know, at the height of, you know, the pandemic.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's follow up a little bit on what Ms. Obranski was talking about. I got two thoughts in my head, and one is that, you know, there's, part of the trick, I shouldn't say trick, that kind of dismisses it, but part of the way to make this work is meeting the kids where they live, I assume, and that means, I mean, there might not be an activity for some kids. That might not be the way, the way they work. Does that make sense? When Ms. Obranski was talking about connection with the guidance counselor, that's kind of an alternative, or, you know, just kind of a check along the way, that that makes a lot of sense to me, because there might be other things going on in the background that it's not really a, an in-school thing necessarily, but, you know, how do you mine that stuff? Probably more importantly is, we're talking about this, and this is kind of a unique snapshot in time, and we do, the YRBS is once every two years?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
How do we, given we're in a particularly challenging, unusual time, how can we, if at all, figure out how we're doing better without waiting for the next YRBS, right? Because I assume this is going to, like, the anecdotal evidence looks good, there's a different feel to this year, but I think all of us, you know, these are very, very shocking numbers, and, you know, they're a little bit dated, but how do, how can we get assurance before the next YRBS that we are trending in the right direction?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the YRBS is a good data collection point that we get consistently every two years, and we ask the same questions. It's a well-developed tool and provides us with that piece. But in the interim, how do we know that we're making progress? And they'll, there, I mean, there's definitely concrete pieces. So we know when kids are referred, we know when kids are hospitalized, we know when kids are struggling, you know, we have that information, we, you know, we can, we have critical case management at the secondary level and know who those students are. So we will know if those numbers are increasing, and hopefully those numbers are decreasing. We know that those numbers have increased. have increased. We were already concerned about the impact that the pandemic was having on our students. We were already concerned about how we were going to help kids transition. That was part of our thought process in developing crew, trying to make sure, breaking down a larger building and making sure every kid felt connected to an adult. The Y R B S data supported that we were making the right decision to go along with that. But we weren't waiting, you know, we don't wait for the Y R B S data. But it helps us to reinforce. And certainly when we get information that looks more concerning than typical, we can think about the pandemic and know that that's part of the impact. But this is the information we have at this moment in time. And so, we want to make sure we're appropriately responding. And hopefully, those actions of being proactive, making connections with kids will help us be trending in the direction that we want to, which is going way down.
Thank you. And thank you for this. It's, you know, it's very eye-opening. I appreciate. And, Mr. Chairman, my apologies for moving back and forth. I hear a little bit better when I'm closer to the speaker.
Understood. Mr. Obransky, please.
Yeah, I already, I know the answer to my own question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is it possible to give the Y R B S again this spring? Would they, would the, is that something that would corrupt the data or?
That's an interesting question. So, we, if we were to give the Y R B S, you know, the exact same question, we definitely would have to think about how we would do that. And it would be only something Melrose was doing.
Right.
As in comparison to, you know, the state, the country, that's when it's given every two years. So, it wouldn't be given in a standard manner that we typically do. I don't know what the impact of doing something like that on our own. I don't know if it's necessarily to give the entire Y R B S, but there could be something where we think about how can we do some additional data collection. Doesn't have to be specifically the Y R B S, but similar kind of pieces to kind of check in that we're on the right track.
Yeah, I think that's something to think about.
You know, yeah.
That makes sense.
Looking at the, looking at the numbers.
I will say that Lindsay Dobbins, Director of Student Service and Counseling, is working really hard on those S E L screeners for students to do consistently. And the middle school is doing that during teen time, and the high school is doing that during crew to make sure that we can kind of see the baseline for where specific students are at a given time.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Razi Thomas.
This is just a comment based on what Mr. Obransky was just raising. If you're doing the signs of suicide, the S O S, if you do that work with students this year, you're going to basically be asking them very specific targeted questions around depression and suicidality. So, if you, it sounds like you're going to bake it into what you're doing this year anyway.
Yes.
So, either through N A N or through S O S. So, you're right there with it, which is good.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anything further from the committee at this point? Seeing nothing further. Much thanks to each of you for your work in this regard, for the presentation. We look forward to further work and further discussion. And with that said, that concludes educational programs and personnel for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell, and thank you, Ms. White-Lambright, for your final presentation to us as an Assistant Superintendent. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up is Finance and Facilities with Ms. Driscoll and Ms. Razi Thomas.
Thank you. First on our agenda this evening is the Student Activity Checking Account Maximals. And I'm going to invite Ms. Secor to speak to that, and it will require a vote this evening.
So, the Student Activity Checking Account Maximals, we retain the same as we have over the past couple of years. We did not change anything from the past. You know, during the pandemic, we kept them at the same levels regardless of the spending we were doing. And we do recommend that you keep the same maximums at this time.
Mr. O'Connell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Mr. O'Connell, seconded by Ms. McAndrew. Is there discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed. And that motion carries six in favor with one absent. Next on our agenda is the revolving account summary. And if you would like to give a brief overview, Ms. Secor, please.
So, in your packet, you'll find the memo on the revolving account funds. And I gave a brief description of all the revolving account funds that we currently use as offsets. Just to, you know, a high-level overview, a revolving fund is a fund or account that remains available to finance an organization's continuing operations without any fiscal year limitation. Sources of funding vary and include fees, tuitions, state appropriations, and reimbursements. And this just means that these are almost like savings accounts. They go on the books, they bring in deposits, and they roll over every year. And we do not lose funding as of June 30th for these accounts.
Very good. Thank you for that overview. Are there any questions on how revolving accounts work or what they mean from the committee? Mr. O'Connell?
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, this is something that we have fairly regularly talked about over the years. And there's been much speculation about it, what they are, what the amount is, why is it changing? And, Ms. Secor, you've done a great job in putting to rest all of those concerns and fears and misconceptions about this. So, thank you for that. Much appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions, Ms. McAndrew?
Yes, thank you very much. This is very helpful for us to see. You and I have talked about this before, and I appreciate it very much. I do, did want to give you a chance, if you wanted to, to comment on the E C C revolving fund because, just because it is a negative balance right now. And I just wanted to understand it. I think I know some of the reasons for that. And also, I know we sometimes hit these reports, you know, when things have been paid out, but tuition hasn't come in, and there's sort of the natural up and down of the account. But did you want to comment at all on that balance and what you anticipate for maybe year end there?
Yeah, so, sure. The Franklin revolving account is tuitions for the preschool. The preschool this year, the teachers in Paris got paid the first week in September. And for us to pay out the payroll almost the first day of school, it takes a little while for the tuitions and the expenses and the payrolls to hit each other. So, we do look to have a $250,000 to the positive as of June 30th.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. That was an excellent summary and a good review for the community to review, to know that their funds are being managed well and watched closely. Last on our agenda is the end-of-year summary, if you'd like to share with us some information about that.
Sure. So, this is the end-of-year report from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is an annual report that is done by the finance departments of all school departments. And this is a summary of all expenditures from school committee, municipal offices, as well as grants and revolving accounts. And so, I've just given you a high-level overview of where we landed on expenditures on points one and two. And I do look forward to being audited again in February, around February. And then I can give you the hard numbers then as to where we landed.
Very good. Any questions on either the memo or Ms. Secor's comments? Mayor Broder.
Did you say you look forward to the audit?
I do. I know. It's crazy.
All right.
I'm sick.
Good for you.
That's why school business administrators are awesome.
Better you than me, Ms. Secor.
Very good. Thank you so much for that and for all of your work for the benefit of our students and families. And that concludes Finance and Facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. Next up, and thank you, Ms. Secor. Next up is Policy and Planning with Ms. Razi Thomas this evening.
Thank you. Welcome to Policy and Planning. First on our agenda is our annual review of our Access to Digital Resources, which is policy I J N D, and our Acceptable Use Policy for Information Technologies. And that's I J N B D, or D B, sorry, I J N D B. So, we are just going to vote on this, and then we're going to do another vote at our next meeting. But we have to do this annually. So, do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion.
To approve. Motion from Ms. Driscoll to...
Approve.
Approve. Okay, thank you.
And I'm happy to second that. I'm assuming it's a motion to approve both. Is that right?
To approve both. Yes, thank you.
Great. Thanks. And I'd like to second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, we have a motion to approve in a second. And can we do a vote? So, is, oh, no, wait a minute. Is there a discussion? Any discussion? No discussion. Okay. Can we get a vote now on whether we're going to continue these policies for now? Vozes. Motion to vote? No, wait a minute. I'm stuck.
All in favor.
All in favor. Thank you very much. Okay, that's unanimous with one not here. Okay. And then the rest of the policies that are here on the agenda, Access to Digital Resources, Acceptable Use Policy for Information Technologies, I'm sorry, no, Policies for Informational Review Only, School Committee Staff Communications, Use of Electronic Messaging by Member, New Member Orientation, Conferences, Committees, and Workshops, Member Compensation and Expenses, Committee Legislative Program, and Committee Memberships. Those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies are for informational review, not for vote. But does anyone have any concerns or comments that they want to make about these today? Ms. Driscoll?
Yeah, so, I just had a question. I believe it's policy B H C, and there's a section on visits, you know, visiting schools.
Yep.
And it indicates that the committee needs authorization to visit schools. And I would just throw it out to the committee for us to maybe think about that. I'm not sure how that works or what that means. I don't think we've ever taken a vote to have a visitation to a school or to have, you know, to allow a member to go visit a school. So, I'm just, I know that's in the, in the M A S C template policy.
Yep.
You know, their policy manual. But I'm just wondering how that would work in practice. So, I don't have an answer right now or a solution or a proposal. It's more something I wonder about, and maybe it stays, or maybe there's something better. So, I'm inviting us all to think about how to do that to make it fair and also respect our staff members at the same time.
I also think there's the reality of us as parents, that we go to schools sometimes to see, you know, our students there, our kids there, and talk to their teachers. So, while we're not in official committee mode during that time, we are, you know, we have to go to the schools at times anyway. So, I think maybe we should talk to Amy Lindquist about this as well as the superintendent to see if there's a slight adjustment to that language. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for bringing that up. Any other comments, questions for any of those policies? Yes?
Sorry, I think I'm understanding correctly that the only one that's changing is B I D, if I got this right, in this slate of, of proposed policies. And in B I D, Member Compensation and Expenses, we're changing from Board of Alderman to City Council. I get that right? Is that, that's essentially it? The others are remaining the same, understanding that they're on for review?
That is correct. We are looking at all of these again, and we can make any changes to update them to the correct current language or to really how the policy should work. So, it's an opportunity for us to review all of them. And this is just informational review. We're not voting.
Right.
So, we have plenty of time between now and the next time they come up to us, in front of us, to change or draft changes.
Good. And just to drive my point home, we get nothing for being on the school committee, right? Unless I'm missing the checks, we don't get paid for this work. And it's, the city council does get paid. Is that right?
I believe that's true.
They do.
Yes.
What do they get, $5,000 bucks a year?
$4,000 plus $1,000.
$4,000?
Plus $1,000.
All right.
Complicated.
$4,000 plus $1,000, we get zero plus zero. Is that right? And we, you know, in a tremendous twist of fate, we get $30 a year for expenses. Have I got that right? Okay.
Each?
We get $30 a year for expenses. So, don't spend that all in one place, I guess, is the advice I would offer. Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that.
My pleasure. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? Okay. So, we'll bring back the annual review for another vote, but the rest of these, we're going to look again the next time we meet. They will go to a regular vote. Thank you. That concludes Policy and Planning for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Razi Thomas. All righty. Hello again, everyone. Next up, we have announcements of the chair. First, we have from the consent agenda, the minutes of the October 12, 2021 Regular Committee Meeting. For purposes of discussion, is there a motion to approve made by Mr. O'Connell, seconded by Ms. Razi Thomas? Any questions, comments, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
And that motion carries with four in favor, two abstentions, and one absent. Thank you all very much. Next up are the outreach reports. Any outreach reports this evening from the committee? Seeing none. We did hear about a couple of things during the meeting, and just wanted to mention the Friends of Melrose Met Co. event on Sunday, which was an excellent and fun event. And thank Ms. Jackson for her work on that, and all the community members and the Friends of Melrose Met Co. who supported that. Next on our agenda is Items for Future Discussion. This is something that we put on the agenda about once a quarter. It's just an opportunity for any member to raise a topic that they would like to see on a future agenda perhaps or hear more about at some point. This is not a debate or a time for discussion of those topics, just an open opportunity when we're all together for any committee member to raise a topic that they might be interested in. Do we have any items for future discussion tonight? Seeing none. We do have need for an executive session this evening. Before we close, I did just want to take a quick moment of personal privilege, if I could, from the chair. And this is not something I planned. But I just want to speak sort of just to the community through the committee and say that there has been a lot of sad news struggle and some fairly vehement debate in the community over the past couple of weeks since we last met. We are, of course, all thinking about a beloved staff member who is in, Matt Rapucci, who is in critical condition, and Mass General Hospital. We have had other concerns and the school community that I won't mention. But I just wanted to say that, speaking as the chair, how much I value and appreciate the superintendent and her leadership team and all that they are going through right now. And I just want to thank her. I know that she had to leave the meeting unexpectedly. And thank her family as well, and the families of all of our principals and all of our educators for everything that they, that they're struggling with and carrying for all of us and for our students right now. And I know that, I speak for the committee when I say how much we appreciate the superintendent and her leadership and how much we support the work that she is doing. And I hope that the community sees and appreciates that hard work as well and will stand with her even when they disagree with a decision that she might make. So... So, thank you all for indulging that. And with that, we do have need for an executive session this evening for the following reasons. To approve the executive session meeting minutes of October 12th, 2021, and to discuss strategy with respect to negotiating a side letter of agreement with the Melrose Education Association. Unit C, the paraprofessionals regarding paraprofessionals who work at education stations on early release days for the 21-22 school year, as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the school committee. We will not be returning to public session this evening. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session made by Mr. O'Connell, seconded by Mayor Broder? Ms. Hogan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Obransky?
Yes.
Mayor Broder?
Yes.
Ms. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Ms. Razi Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. DeSelma's absent, Ms. McAndrew.
Yes, and we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you all.